At seven thirteen.
I just want you to know I used to work as a state pay as an underwear so in the multi family. Yeah, I'm not getting paid for this.
Thank you.
You know, and the nonprofit comment. Wasn't kind. Okay, I mean.
Thank you.
Don't mean that, Dr. Peddway, but thank you for hearing us.
And that was our last public comment. Um, that brings us to, we already did two pledge of allegiance unless anybody wants to do it again.
Okay.
So let's all, number three additions and changes to the agenda.
Like one under new business, I'd like to add, um, it would be, oh, I guess we have to f- 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 nagle with the letters.
Wait, 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 wait. It's new business. You can add anything you want at nine.
Oh, at nine, never mind. I'll add it at nine A. There you go. I'm sorry. Getting, getting out of order.
That's okay. I mean, if you wanted it before nine.
No, 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 they can go at nine A. It won't, yeah, they can go at nine. Thank you.
Any, any adjustments? No? Move it. Uh, Dan, any adjustments?
Dan, still on? Well, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. That brings us to our third, third public comment of the night. Uh, this section of the agenda is reserved for me to say the spiel again. I am going to skip that part. Is there any public comment? Any public comment online? Excellent. That brings us to number five. Good to know.
I did reach out to the new resident children. She couldn't make it today, but she's planning on coming to the next meeting on the twenty fifth.
Awesome. Go to your back.
Um, appointments and resignations. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, would you like to take that proposed motion?
I would. I move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Brian D. Smith as a regular member from the zoning board of appeals with regret and thanks for his years of service. Further, that the selectman designate Friday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The thirty-fifth and final day by which nomination shall be received would be Friday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, comment?
I have to make a comment about my friend Brian Smith. I'm sorry. Please indulge me. Brian's an incredible public servant. Um, he was a, a key part of the Democratic Town Committee when I was chair. He ran our fundraising committee. He pulled off many successful events. And then he served on zoning board of appeals. I think we're gonna miss him and I regret that he's leaving. So, thank you, Brian, for everything you've done in this community.
Awesome. With that, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed nay, or abstentions say so. Uh, Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Oh, Fitzgerald, oh, Fitzgerald, aye. Tiffany Teal, aye. Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye, and thank you for passing that. Um, that brings us to item number seven, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sent an email out to the board earlier today. We had an award hearing this week, and there's a memo from the town attorney. And I believe we fared well. Uh, we just have to supply some additional information in the next thirty days, which I don't think is a huge undertaking except for all the other things we have to do, right, Dory? But we'll get it done and we'll comply with that.
Okay. Um. A quick question. Is that, is that the, the end of it? Once we provide that information? Like, are there any other hearings that would come up after this? I don't think so, correct? Not a big goal?
To answer your question, uh, this particular one, that's the only complaint.
Okay.
And we're gonna adhere to that one, but he had, he has more wide, broad requests, which are.
Yeah, this, this concludes only that.
Okay, all right, it's on the chart.
That's a good question. Um, I always like to come back with a good, good note, always. Uh, I don't know if you picked up on that, but the dog park is almost done. I'm shooting for if everything goes well, a soft opening on the twenty-fifth.
Wonderful. Oh, that's great.
So, we're, you know, our Parks and Parks Department, along with the, the Public Works and all these other entities working on these, uh, our funds have really done a, a good job and the, and results are really, people are, are really using the pickleball courts to skateboard park, the, under the lights. Having a movie this weekend, uh, up there. They're gonna do the truck or treat at Vets Park. So it's really transformed into a full use dur- during the day. Before it was like after school or at night or while the game was going on, but the, that park is full morning, noon, and night. So pickleball's morning, noon, and evening too as well.
Thanks. Um, is Craig and/or the dog warden thinking about doing a cutting ceremony?
Absolutely. So that's why he says soft opening.
Okay.
He's, um, he's gonna reach out to the veterinarian down here to see if they wanna do something.
Oh, nice.
He's working with a skateboard company on Manchester for an opening for the skateboard park.
Yeah.
But he'll be reaching out to the selectmen under my advice because it's now coming into political election season.
I said.
A good time to get some pictures of those ribbons cut.
Yeah, so he sounds good. We will get out the gold scissors. We have gold scissors? I don't know.
Dory, do we have gold scissors? We have some big scissors.
We have big scissors.
Thanks, I think I got it.
Okay.
Um, we finally, we had a big paving project on Paper Mall Road, which is on the Marlboro Town Line. That was kind of a, I don't know if you know the demographics of Hebron, when it goes down Old Hartford Road and then down Lake Hallow Road. There's portions that are in Haven, there's portions that are in Colchester, there's portions that are in Marlboro. So we worked that out. And Marlboro did their section last year, so we kept our commitment to it this year. So we have some very happy residents at the end. I think one or two of them are Hebron, but those are Marlboro that are more static. So I think you'll be hearing from them hopefully in a positive note.
You had a question about brown projects. Um, I had, well, just asked me, what is the status of the Joey Street bidding?
That's a, that's a grant. That's a stiff grant, and we're working, uh, through that process to, uh, all the direction that grants. I think that's scheduled for next year.
Twenty-six?
Yes.
I work in.
Yeah, and they can call the Public Works tomorrow. You have more information than that, but we just, we had staff meetings, uh, every other week after these meetings, every Monday. But then we have, what's the other meeting?
Project.
We have project meetings, which we just had this week, and that was one of the, uh, on the checklist. So that's along with Martin Road as well. Martin's gonna go out to bid. The bridge is out to bid. Oh, Colchester Road, but, uh, good question. We're gonna set up interviews for the revenue collector as soon as we can and try to get some help done in that office. Um, today was the first meeting after a little sabbatical with the Region Eight Insurance Consortium, which our numbers are, it was going down a little bit during the summer, but we had another good month, so they're, they're back up. We have three point two million in the bank right now for contingency, which is where we wanna be. Um, of course, we continue to work with the auditors, both, uh, the town audit and the forensic audit at the same time. So that's taken up a lot of our time. The Hebron Fair went as well as it could. It did get a little wet on the weekend, but they're being optimistic. And then Matt kinda touched on it, but we also have our consultant, and we're gonna start to meet with him to look at our, our locations for drilling other pest wells for water as well. We had some locations picked out, town owned properties. Uh, so we're moving forward with that.
And just a quick clarification, I forgot to bring it up at the previous meeting. Is that, um, the Commonswell grant, is that contingent on building the, or digging the wells, that two point one million dollar grant? Is that contingent on the housing?
These are, these are separate. These are wells that we funded in our budget to explore during.
Okay.
When you heard Father Ryan said, they need two wells that produce ten gallons a minute.
Well, I mean, that, that grant they had mentioned, I just, it just came.
Yeah, this has.
Then I'll, I'll withdraw the question.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hearing you correctly. The grant has nothing to do with this, this.
Correct. That's why I just, it just sprung to my mind, like, oh, speaking of drilling wells, like, there was a grant that they were talking about that.
Yeah, that's specific to that.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Hold on. And that, that was it. That's all I have. Awesome. That brings us to eight A. Anything on eight A? And no. Anything on eight B, Department of Public Works Action Committee?
We are here tonight, uh, to ask you wait for the next meeting. Uh, I'm in the process of, uh, preparing a presentation for you. Pete, you'll probably see it this weekend.
Okay.
Um, we will be meeting with the consultant on Monday. Uh, it made amazing progress in the last three weeks. Uh, you've seen some, a lot of the things that have come, come along. The, uh, hazardous study is done. The phase one is in draft form, but pretty much complete. Uh, they've done amazing work in, in layouts, and we've asked the, uh, folks down in Public Works to pick which one they think is most functional, and that's the one that we're going to, to present. And obviously, we can, we can look at other ones too, but, uh, I think the way we put it was, you gotta live with it, folks. Which one works best? Um, but, uh, you know, the further we get down the road, the closer this thing comes to reality, and I think you're gonna be happy to see some of the progress that's been made over the last, this few weeks.
Richard. We, Mal and I participated in an online virtual working session, um, with Paul, Darren, Mary Rose Betts, and Silver Petraselli. Um, they're on target to hit their biggest degree milestone of the first week of October of being able to present schematic design. Conversations I've had with Silver Petraselli, the staff down at PPW is they have honed in on a site layout, building layout, uh, for all buildings, so that is starting to congeal very fast. We're going to be back before your board on the twenty-fifth, and we'll be able to share the updates, the visuals of that. Um, the, the dog pound is laid out. Those drawings have been shared with the animal control officer, so, um, as Mal said, they are making monumental progress. Uh, I shared with you all the deliverables that they've come in. Um, so, um, they are really, uh, they have all the oars in the water, as they say, so they're, they're making surprising progress.
Yeah, October first is, uh, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna try to pare down the four hundred and eighty-seven page, phase one. I think I got it down to like six or seven slides. But, uh, my man. Yeah, too many, right?
The reality is, having done the ground penetrating, right, it shows some, as they say, below surface anomalies. They were correlated back to some documents that were found in the town archives, and now really necessitate what they call a phase two environmental, uh, assessment. There are, as I said, there are recognized environmental conditions below grade. They, they need to determine is there absolute contamination? If there was, was it cleaned up? Was it not cleaned? So that's part of the phase two.
And, and so you don't panic. Money has, is it already in the agreement, uh, to cover phase two?
On, on the design side.
On the design side, and, you know, we believe that there's more than enough allowance there to, to cover this because what they found, though, it could be significant in terms of when we go to build, uh, the amount of work that has to be done, there's more than enough money in the, uh, in the product, in the design piece of the project. So we won't be coming back.
So I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, I'm not trying to take your place, the communications major, but I'm, I'm thinking about like, you know, getting public interaction. What if we could get people to guess what those anomalies are, and we collect all the guesses, and whoever's closest gets a free ticket to the ribbon cutting? What do you think? All right, Rich is on the fence. Okay, well, we'll come back for that. We'll come back. Okay, I think your communication's minor.
You're, you're gonna find the people that have lived here for fifty years or forty years.
I don't know what she has here. They're gonna be like, that's a Chevy Civic.
Along the land and engineering, did the research, so I kinda know what's there. So, and it's not Jimmy Hoff.
No, it's good.
Well, that's one mystery solved.
So, we're, we're, we're making some terrific.
Good.
I think you'd be happy next week or two weeks.
Excellent. Um, that brings us to eight C, Personnel Policy Review.
So that's out to the staff. We haven't heard anything back, so if you know, there's good news, a plan, or if it's okay with the board, put that on the next agenda for the selectmen, if that works. Uh, and there's other, there's other towns or cities that have personnel policy. Would you like some of those for comparisons?
If we're thinking about changing the language, it would be nice to see what other people have to kind of.
Yeah, the labor turn didn't change too much, other than what new legal stuff we didn't have in there, right?
Right, it's the sick leave.
So we didn't change anything other than what we needed to be legal and what was updating. If you guys wanna change stuff, then I, I don't know. That, that was why I would give you a comparison. We're not looking to change anything.
Okay.
And I don't think the staff, by, by not hearing back, that seems like they're looking to change it.
All right, so then maybe let's set a deadline that if any of the selectmen have any areas of interest, uh, get that information to Dory by, what are we, on the eleventh now? Let's say the twentieth? That'll put us a week and a half out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Good enough. Well, um, so yeah, please get that information to Dory by the twentieth, uh, by email so that we can, um, gather any comparative language. That brings us to eight D, any other old business? That brings us to nine A. Uh, the bid award for Ram Middle High School Emergency Electric Generator. And I am not even close to that motion. You got that motion?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Want me to read the narrative for the public or?
Um, I can read.
Okay, well, you're talking about the narrative for the public.
Uh, the town recently received bids in response to a request for bids to furnish only an emergency electric generator at Rand Middle and High School, eighty-five Wall Street, Hebron, Connecticut. Attached is summary of the three responses received, also attached is a recommendation from the Public Building Committee, together with a copy of HO Penn Machinery Co., Inc. proposal. The proposed motion is as follows. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the bid for the emergency electric generator at Rand Middle and High School to HO Penn Machinery Co., Inc. of Poughkeepsie, New York, in the amount of three hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars as recommended, and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign necessary contract documents.
Before we get into discussion, Rick, sure, any, any comment on this?
Um, the only thing I just wanted to kind of reiterate, it's the whole purpose of this upgrade project. Currently, there's a five hundred KW generator up at the middle high school. When there's a power outage, it's very selective on what it can provide power to. And one of the most dramatic things is if there's a power outage during a little day, the superintendent has to make a decision based on whatever information he gets members source. Does, does he tough it out, or does he offer the buses and take kids home? So, by installing a twelve hundred and fifty KW generator, that no longer becomes an issue. But more importantly, the high school then becomes a full-service shelter. Because we all know, having going up there, you go into a bath and the toilet's flush, the sink's not, the hand dryer's not. This will address that. The kitchen, um, pardon me, say, no, no heat, you know, they're all cold lunches or cold meals. So, uh, we have an outage in the middle of the summer, if a hurricane, there's no air conditioning. That will address that. So, um, this is the first part of a multi-phase project. Mal and I are currently working on the second, second phase, and ultimately there'll be a third phase.
And just for the public's information, um, Richard is absolutely correct in everything he said. However, just the purchase and the installation of this generator is not gonna power the whole business. We still have to have switchgear, different switchgear installed, but eventually, at the end of the project, everything will be powered. Um, the downside of that is, we started, this project was originally awarded, I believe, in twenty twenty-one. It got turned over to the building committee in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-three. Um, inflation, COVID, all of this stuff, uh, we don't have enough money to complete it all. So we have enough to buy the generator, to connect it to the building, and power what's currently being powered. And then we're gonna have, need, need to get some more money. Kathy Austin has been working on it for the last three and a half months. Uh, she put in a request, but if you look at the, the way the state is funding, and a couple people here know where the state is, um, we put in for a fire truck, how many years ago, Andy?
Two.
Two years ago, it was just funded. So we're looking for an additional five hundred thousand, uh, dollars to complete the project. Uh, and I know Kathy will do her best to get it for us, and Steve is working on it too. You know, I think for clarification, what Mal was making reference to in twenty twenty-one was a two million dollar grant for better economic, you know, yeah. So there we are, four years, five years later, and with inflation, dollars are not, you know, not going as hard as they.
Right, right. All right. Anything else? All right. Dan Larson, oh, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye, all those opposed nay, and abstentions, please let me know. Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, I, I agree, and I say, I, I just wanna also state, I actually was around when that school was built. That school was built, in a sense, uh, the plans were submitted, uh, piecemeal to the, the powers to make the decision on it. And I want to publicly say, that must never happen again. Uh, it was always stated that that school was supposed to be our emergency, uh, sheltering, and when the final designs got done, that part had been omitted, and if we had had the entire set of plans, uh, the, the, uh, officials at the time would have seen that, and it would have gotten caught back then, not, what, twenty years, forty-five years later? So, but yeah.
Awesome. Uh, Sean Fitzgerald, oh, Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. That passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. Um, and that, that brings us to nine B, uh, review of Administrative Secretary Three, um, Building Department Job Description. You wanna read that motion and then we'll get into, uh, no, you already read it.
You don't have to mention.
Oh, good. Is this reviewing it and turning it in?
Commenting.
Yeah, this is, this is, I've come to the final announcement. Selectmen, like, at first glance, everything before we have to do a motion on it, so we kind of agreed that instead of doing them all at once, you're gonna.
No, that's for you.
No, 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 my notes.
Oh, your notes, okay, yeah. So yeah, so do that, and then we'll incorporate them and bring them back. We'll redline them or whatever.
Awesome. If any of that is illegible, sorry.
Um, so we didn't, unless you want to do something, we didn't anticipate a, a work, I'll say, because it's first glance.
Perfect. Moving on.
Wait, the.
Uh, nine, nine C, same, uh, Administrative Secretary, and that brings us to nine D, draft agenda for September twenty-fifth. And I guess I kind of do want to make an adjustment to that. Um, and the, well, actually, I, 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 no, I'm not gonna make an adjustment to that. You know, I'm gonna put mine under, under ninety. Never mind. Okay, so any comments on draft agenda? No? Okay, get them to Dory if you have them. And that brings us to nine E, any other new business? You wanna go first?
Yep, I'll go first. So, um, I'd like to add, for either the next, for the next agenda, um, discussion on ordinance, uh, banning roadside zoo attractions. Um, this is the, I think, the third time in the years that I've been living here that the, uh, that the Hebron Fair has had wild animals on display. I find that to be exploitive, and I think that an ordinance would be in order to ensure that we don't have this problem recurring. A few years ago, it was tigers, and they got, you know, obviously, a lot of people in the community were really upset about that. This past year, it was sea lions, and I got a lot of constituents very unhappy about that. Um, so I'd like us to discuss that, look at a draft, see what we can do. Thank you.
Is there anything you want me to do more prepared than what I've done thus far with the attorney's notes?
I think, I think Attorney Slater makes a great point, like, let's talk about like the definition of an animal, right? I don't wanna hamstring what I think to be the essential function of an agricultural fair, right? What I'm talking about are wild animal, exotic animal, zoo attractions, that I, I just don't wanna see in town.
So you're focusing more on, on animals that would require, in, in certain states, an exotic animal license?
Yeah, I, you know, I.
Because that, I don't think most farm animals would fall into that.
Right, and so I think, um, the Bridgeport statute is one that I'm leaning towards seeing a version of that Attorney Slater provided you, where it just says, no, outright, and it defines it. And so I think if you wanna work through him and, and the fair to figure it out, I, I think agricultural fairs are so important. I'm not trying to be critical of the fair in any way, shape, or form. I just feel very strongly, wild animals are not here for our entertainment.
Yeah.
Um, and it's something, I get a lot of constituents coming to me to talk about because they're upset about it, so I have to act on it.
We actually got calls as well.
That's my issue. Thank you.
Okay. Or stay tuned for next meeting. Um, the one that I would like to add to new business, if we could, is, um, with last meeting's resignation of Kevin Grady, that brings the WPCA members down to three.
It does. I had a, I don't know if this could help your conversation, but I had a gentleman in my office that is looking, he's retired, uh, coastguard. Uh, young, he was looking for, uh, helpless community boards and commissions. I suggested he look at that one, so I'm waiting here back for him, but go ahead with the rest of your state.
Okay. Well, I was gonna go the other way with that, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
I was going to, uh, look for the board's permission to reach out to the Board of Finance to determine their feelings, and, and also determine your feelings about making those two empty positions, one appointed by the Board of Finance, or they're appointed by us, actually, one, a, a serving member of the Board of Finance, and one, a serving member of the Board of Selectmen. That's, um, if, if you guys are, and Dan, climb in here if you need to.
Yeah, sir.
Okay. Um, and I just wanted to throw that out there to, to get your kind of feeling on it, and if you would like me to move forward as the chair, I will reach out to the Chair of the Board of Finance to determine their feelings on it, and, um, you know, we can kind of go from there with the conversation. Um, I mean, for myself, I'm essentially going to abstain, because I, I, I cannot recommend something that I don't have the ability to fulfill. Okay. Like, I just, I, between coaching work, kids, and everything, I would not be able to be on that, on that committee, so I can't try to force anyone else on this board to do that. So I'll just, I'll, I'll simply abstain from the vote because I, I just can't fulfill that commitment. That's understandable. Okay.
I support it. I think, I think, um, I think that we had some challenges in terms of information, in terms of what's happening there, right? And so I support the move for you to reach out to the, the Chair, the Board of Finance, to see what we can do.
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and again, um, if they are feeling the same way, that they are overburdened, and it's not an obligation they're willing to take on, then then, of course, we'll move to the outside. But I know that that has been a comment in the past, um, you know, by, by both past boards. Um, and again, that may change. We are right around the corner from November. Um, so, uh, future board may think I'm out of my mind. So at, at this point, we still are very much in the conversation phase, but if, if you guys are up for it, I can start that conversation.
I'm up for it.
Okay. Dan, how you feeling?
If, if I. Um, to be honest, I, I think we need to have a, a far broader discussion on the whole WPCA makeup, i- i- its organizational structure. I'm not sure legally what we can or can't do. Um, but I'm just looking at, in the past, you know, the rates where we had to, you know, I'm not sure if the right term would be to bail them out or, or whatever. Uh, but there's, there's been some, uh, funding controversies, uh, to be one way to put it. Um, I, I think we really need to look at that organization. I think we really need to look at that organization, how it's set up, how it's structured, how it's funded, its funding sources. Because I, I think there's a lot of potential upgrading or changing that needs to be considered.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. And, and this is why I kind of saw this as, as a first step. Because as, as you know, Dan, I mean, you've been running this town for God knows how many years on all the different boards. You know, your first six months on a board, you're just learning the ins and outs, the regulatory aspects of it, the statutes, the pertinent statutes. You know, thi- this would very much be a first step for someone on the Board of Selectmen, someone on the Board of Finance, to begin to acclimatize themselves, to be able to better pass that information along to the other two entities, and, and kind of make a much stronger relationship between our three boards so that we can move forward with some really good conversations. Because some of the conversations we've had in the past haven't really produced results that I, I feel have satisfied us. So maybe this will be slightly better.
Some of it.
Because.
Yeah. So, yeah. Some of its history, the thing is, I, I, I don't want history to repeat itself because that's the way it's always been done. We really need to take a hard pass, look at it, and you may want to get people, you know, fellow past board members to see if we would kind of work together to go over some of this stuff, you know, myself, Mal, you know, people have been kind of involved, you know, for a long period of time to kind of help share knowledge. I don't want to say guide because, you know, I don't want to do that, but, you know, sharing knowledge to help so that we can make a better mousetrap.
Yep. Okay. Well, let me, let me reach out to them and, and maybe, you know, one of the first steps, I'll see how the Board of Finance feels about it. Maybe one of the first steps is us just having a kind of a quick hit meeting between our two organizations to see, you know, how we feel about moving forward and, and what that might look like as well. So if, if the board, it seems like the board is fine with it, I will reach out to the Chair of the Board of Finance and see what we can arrange for communications.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Also, I would suggest Andy and/or legal representation, just so that we don't come up with all kinds of great ideas that legally can't be done.
Right.
Because if it is a separate board, there are nuances that I don't have a clue on. Thank you.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, sir. So, yeah, so we can just throw that on new business as WPCA discussion.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the state statutes about what governs that, what the different offices and towns can do. We've done it, we've done it before. We can, we can resurrect that.
Sounds good. Any other new business? All right. That brings us to item ten, the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss particular items, section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. Does anybody want a separate vote? Okay, we are going to vote. We moved that the Board of Selectmen approved the following consent agenda items, approval of minutes from August twenty first, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, and the listed tax refunds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Dan Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Dr. Scher, Dr. Cheryl, I. Tiffany, Teal.
Tiffany, Teal, I.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, I.
Keith Pettit, I. Thank you very much. The Ason Reports.
Don't have anything in HM, but as everybody probably pretty much knows by now, schools are open. I can report that the Board of Ed has said they had a great opening of schools, and the new preschool classroom is going well also. So that's some good positive stuff there, and they meet tonight again. So they keep meeting.
I know.
Ridiculous. That's what I thought. Thank you.
And, oh, that was your, that was your Hebrew Board of Ed as well. You snuck it in there. Okay. Dan Larson, what are you sneaking in? Board of Finance?
I have nothing sorry for tonight.
Okay, sounds good. And land acquisition has migrated. Normally, it would have been yesterday. No, normally would have been right before the fair. So it got migrated to September seventeenth. So I will have something to say next time, but nothing right now. Claudia Riley.
I have nothing to report from Rand Beal.
Excellent. So that brings us to our fourth public comment of the evening. Is there any public comment? You know, we could have been out of here at seven forty.
You're going to be. Totally support your thoughts on WPCA. And I would simply suggest that we are meeting, Board of Finance is meeting the same night as you're meeting next time on the twenty fifth. Maybe we could sneak it in then, and that's all I have to say.
Oh, all right.
It's, it's, it works so good, it's, it works so good in the past when we try to do that.
Wow.
On that, the authority whether you do it or not, but yeah, they were upstairs, we were downstairs, we were waiting for them. I just want to make sure you guys are.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I do remember that. Yeah, we, we do tend to be a little more no nonsense. Yeah, okay, we'll see. Any other public comments? Public comment online?
Hands raised.
Awesome. And would anyone other than Tiffany like to do item thirteen?
Move to a turn, Board of Selectmen's regular meeting at seven fifty PM.
Amazing. Awesome. Thank you all. I appreciate your time.